Call the Board of Supervisors to order for our April 5, 2011 Board Meeting. Would we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Merida, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's because he forgot it.
It's hard to keep all these things memorized. There are no announcements this morning, so we'll move forward with our consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without further discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested member of the public may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed for further discussion prior to the Board's taking action. The consent agenda is our items, 1 through 4. Does any Board member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda?
Item 4.
Merida's going to pull item 4. Any staff member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Is there any member of the public here present this morning that has any item on the consent agenda they wish to have discussed with or by the Board prior to the Board's taking action? If so, please speak up. Seeing none, I'll bring the consent agenda back to the Board. The chair is open for a motion on the balance of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway.
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Walensky. Further Board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed. Passes on a 4.
3. I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining. Okay, a 3, 1 absent, 1 abstention vote of the Board of Supervisors. We'll move then to item 4, which is a resolution supporting the application by the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce for a United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Rural Business Enterprise Grant. Merida.
Item number 4 on the board packet. I was wondering who updates this and how will the updates be paid for?
Well, this is the Chamber of Commerce. What we're applying to do is apply for a $50,000 USDA rural business enterprise grant. And the purpose of the grant is to kind of go on from the economic element, which was part of the county general plan. This is not intended on being any part of the county's general plan, but a unique strategic document on how to move forward with business attraction and retention. And so, we would just continue to maintain that because we feel like we're filling the role of Economic Development Agency for the county right now.
Okay, so the Chamber will be updating the maps and the Chamber will be paying for the update?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other Board discussion? Any public discussion? Seeing none, the chair is open for a motion on item 4.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Walensky. Do I have further Board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye. It passes on a 3, 1 absent, 1 abstention vote of the Board of Supervisors. We will stand in recess until 9:10. Thank you. Over to its regular agenda item. First up is item 5, public comments, 5 minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to items of interest to the public that are within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the Board. So, Bonnie.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs. And this morning, I'd like to recognize and thank Steve Walensky for stepping forward to participate on the IHSS Advisory Committee as, I'm not sure if it's an ex officio member or what your designated role or title would be.
Member in public.
Member in public, okay. Well, with you there, it doesn't seem like I have to be there all the time anymore. So, I will very happily let you be in charge of what I've considered to be a monitoring because I felt I needed to do something to something that I didn't feel was working right. So, and I also think that there's a lot of new people on that Board and there's a real good chance that that Board has got a real good chance to succeed in whatever it is it's supposed to have been succeeding in all these years. I just have to say, I wouldn't have missed last meeting for anything because they found out for sure that their budget is being cut from over $50,000 a year to $3,000 a year. And that's from the state, and I believe the federal government's going to maybe match $3,000. Well, I've had to chuckle because in all of that reality, one of the biggest issues they discussed was how they're going to pay their stipends. They didn't talk about postage, they didn't talk about mailing, they didn't talk about anything except how much their stipends were last year, how much they are to date, and what they project for next year. So, I'm anticipating they may come and ask you for some money to help their program, to help maintain their stipends, I guess. And if that happens, and I'm here, I'm going to start screaming bloody murder. Because I've been groveling around for months to get nickels and dimes to pay for fingerprints and background checks, and services are priority. They're cutting services and we're allowing fluff to continue, administrative bureaucracy. I have always had a problem with the public sorority, I mean, the public authority and the IHSS advisor. Freudian slip there, boy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the IHSS Advisory Committee and what I thought they should be doing, just from my really ignorant point of view, and so anyway, I hope that doesn't happen and I hope I don't have to start screaming bloody murder because I'm a fool and I'll look like a bigger fool. But thank you all for listening to me harp about this for two years. It's been almost two years that I've been almost weekly complaining about my tax dollars supporting what I don't think is a necessary entity. So, thank you all and good night.
Good morning. I'm going to preface this by saying this is not me, but I've got to do this. And it's also apropos that you led the Pledge of Allegiance, of which we just recited. The key words to me are the pledge, flag, and republic. As it is written, Mr. Benjamin Franklin reportedly was asked after the drafting of the U.S. Constitution in 1788, what have you given us? It is said, he responded, "A republic, if you can keep it." One of the first issues of the First Congress address was to draft what is now the First Ten Amendments of the Constitution known as the Bill of Rights. The First Amendment states, and I will paraphrase, Congress, oh, and by the way, it was ratified in December of 1791, the Bill of Rights. It states, "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech." Webster's dictionary definition is of abridging, curtailing, or impose a restriction. The California Constitution states under Article 1, Section 2, again paraphrasing, "Every person may speak freely. His or her sentiments of all subjects being responsible for the abuse of this right." Notice the word "responsible." The California Constitution, Article 20, Section 3, states, "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California." The above oath required, is required when a public officer becomes elected or re-elected to office. Further, it states that public officers and employees include county officials. So where am I going? Well, in addition to being in this room on March 22, 2 weeks ago, I reviewed the video of the meeting ad nauseam to make sure that I heard correctly and to only make reference to the words used and not to take the meanings out of context. I'm specifically addressing what occurred at the end of the discussion on STANTEC. Two comments regarding STANTEC were addressed from this side of the podium, and the word "sustainable" was used, and to be clear, not by both individuals. Supervisor Spellman followed with a comment, during which he used the words "sorrows," "anti-American," "Tea Party," and "Constitution." And don't take me out of context, I'm not saying he used those words in his comments regarding, he used them only, and regarding the companies with whom the county does business. Supervisor Callaway followed with comments and in part stated, "If we're going to start selecting companies based on how they do things, that's not the American way, it's not where we should be going, and the whole conversation is offensive." Fact, there is nothing in the First Amendment that states that a person must say what a supervisor wants to hear, and there is nothing that states that we, the people, have only one choice, yours, and there is nothing that protects anyone from being offended. The remarks I heard that day coming from one of authority are very intimidating. They create an atmosphere known as the chilling effect. Webster's definition of the chilling effect states, "A situation where speech or conduct is suppressed by fear of penalization at the interest of an individual or a group." A chilling effect builds a wall whereby those who may consider dressing this Board will not. Unintentional actions have consequences, and so do intentional words. Words mean a lot. And in the words of who I think is one of the most wonderful individuals of this country is Thomas Jefferson, "A bill of rights is what the people are entitled to against every government on earth." Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you just state your name for the record, please?
She isn't talking.
What's her name?
It's the floor.
Thank you.
Good morning. Barbara Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. I'm here to remind everybody that the second installment of our property taxes is due on the 10th, but because it does fall on a Sunday, it will be due on Monday. So, yeah. We're getting an extra day.
Thank you for keeping up the tradition.
I thought I should, but thank you, and sorry to bring the word "taxes" up here. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other public comments?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, Al Segala, Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. And I'd like to comment on the workshop we had on CalPERS. And, basically, these are questions that can be answered later, and also observations. During the workshop, CalPERS acknowledged an outstanding liability of about $40 million. Why is this not recognized as a liability on the Calaveras County financial statements so that it's disclosed to taxpayers? The liability may be much larger because it accounted for market losses but did not include the difference between the 7.75% assumed return for the future and the actual returns of the past. In financial planning, consideration of the downside of future projections is normally required. Why did the presentation only consider the best case projected for the next 2 decades? Why were public comments restricted to a few minutes and CalPERS unrestricted? When CalPERS was requested to comment on the little Hoover recommendations for CalPERS reform, the response was that the comments were on the CalPERS website. However, not addressing these recommendations for reform created an informational bias which seems contrary to the best interests of the public and the taxpayer. I think what we had, we didn't have actually a workshop, we had basically a presentation from CalPERS, and which basically they were selling the CalPERS program to us. But what I thought we were going to be doing was evaluating CalPERS as to other possible alternatives that the public may have and to see what would be best for the future, not only for the employees but also for the taxpayers. If Tom Tryon was playing poker in Las Vegas and with his own money, and then when he ran out of money, normally you have to quit and go home, but if he had the ability to go to somebody else, say Merida, and get the money from her, even without her permission, then he can continue playing.
A lot of him using her money at the beginning, then.
Well, it's just taking the money when there's a loss from somebody else is the basic problem with CalPERS. The defined benefit program doesn't take into consideration when there's not money available. It causes a taxation of people without representation, without voting on or anything, it's just like automatic. You get the bill from CalPERS and you pay it, and then you have to fire people or lay them off, well, you do it because you need to meet that obligation. So, in facing CalPERS reform, I don't know all the answers, but it seems like the main part of the program is a defined benefit part of it. And I just got an email this morning from a source that indicated that the county of, Orange County, just installed a private program that has been able to solve some of the problems that CalPERS has, and it'd be worthwhile looking at. But I think what, in the future, what we need to do is, I don't know if it's going to be a workshop or what, but we need to look at this closer. One of the things I come across, which I hate to mention, but I think is true, is that most of the people dealing for the taxpayers on this issue are part of the system, their own retirement programs are part of it. And it's awful hard for these people, which is all of you, basically, except for Gary Toffenelli, it's hard for you to say, "Well, I'm going to cut back on my retirement because it's best for the public." That's a hard thing to do. But in some way, it has to be done so that you serve the public above your own interests. And county council did say that according to the law, you are not responsible, I mean, you're absolved from conflict of interest when it comes to CalPERS.
15 seconds, Al.
He mentioned a section of the code for that, and if he could repeat that, I'd be most grateful, and thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close out public comments and move forward to item 6, a resolution declaring April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is being brought to us by First 5 Calaveras. Kelly, how are you today?
How are you?
Fine.
I'm Kelly Fergaro. I'm the Program Director for the Resource Connection Calaveras Crisis Center. And I have a lot of people behind me.
Yeah.
The Child Abuse Prevention Council for Calaveras County and the Calaveras County Sexual Assault Response Team have partnered this year for April. Usually, we do separate resolutions, but we got to talking, and unfortunately, this year, we have seen a really high number of pediatric sexual assaults in Calaveras County. And the group behind me is very concerned about this trend. And so, we thought we would partner, talk about how people can identify child abuse or possible child sexual abuse in their children, how the community can protect their children from this, and make the community aware of this problem. I have a resolution before me that I want to read to you, but before I do that, I would like your pleasure for each person behind me to introduce themselves and tell you what their role is.
Thank you.
Pat Ross, Adult Literacy Program. I'm a member of the council, and I'm here to help create awareness for the prevention of child abuse and sexual abuse. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mikey Habistad. I work for the Calaveras Works and Human Services Agency in the Children's Services and Employment Services Units, and I'm also the current Chair of the Prevent Child Abuse Calaveras County Council.
My name is Linda Nguyen, and I'm the Nursing Director with the Health Department. I'm also the Maternal-Child Analyst and Health Director, and I've been a nurse for a long time and dealt with women and children, and this is unfortunately, an ongoing issue.
My name is Tracy Young. I'm a parent, and I'm also with the Resource Connection as a family advocate, and I'm the Vice Chairman.
Good morning. Terry Hall, Chief Probation Officer. I am also part of the council, and we are, like was mentioned, we are very concerned with the rising rates and the statistics. So, any awareness that we can bring to the public would be great. Thank you.
Good morning. Barbara Yuke, District Attorney. I prosecute the child abuse and the sexual assault cases. We have seen a high number of cases just since the beginning of the year. Since I'm also the department head, I'm actually losing my mind with all these cases. It's been pretty astounding this last year. I'm also a member of the Sexual Assault Response Team.
Good morning. I'm Karen Pekarsik, and the Director of First 5 Calaveras. We administer the child abuse prevention funds for the county, and one of our staff, Robin Davis, who isn't able to be here today, is the Coordinator for the council. First 5 Calaveras has a mission of helping children birthed at 5 be safe, healthy, and ready for school, and we're very alarmed at the statistics that we're seeing and the issues that our children are facing, so we're supportive of the resolution.
Melissa Quavers, Chief Nurse Executive over at Mark Twain St. Joseph's Hospital, member of the Sexual Assault Response Team, representing the hospital. It's nice to see all of you.
Good morning. My name is Johanna from Alford. I'm the Emergency Department Nurse Manager at Mark Twain St. Joseph's Hospital. I'm also the Sexual Assault Response Team Site Coordinator for Calaveras County SARC Team.
Good morning. I'm Alisa Gurke. I'm the Social Services Supervisor for CalWorks and Human Service Agency, and I'm also sit on the Sexual Assault Response Team Board.
My name is Gary Coons, Calaveras County Sheriff, and I'm also a member of the SARC Team.
This is one of the things I love about Calaveras County. Where else can you get so many high-powered people behind a cause? I think that's wonderful. So, if I can take a moment and read the resolution for you. Whereas the Center for Disease Control now ranks child abuse as America's number-one public health crisis, and whereas child abuse occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, and whereas children who have witnessed or experienced violence are more likely to learn various aggressive strategies in order to deal with life circumstances, they need to feel secure and be provided with the opportunity to express themselves because the physical and emotional scars can last a lifetime, and whereas approximately 120 Calaveras County children each year are reported as victims of sexual assault, and whereas 77 adult and child victims of sexual assault were seen at the Calaveras Crisis Center in the last 12 months, of those, 25% were under the age of 18, and 9% were under the age of 12, and whereas 48 adult victims of sexual assault were seen at the Calaveras Crisis Center in the last 12 months, of those, 83% reported being sexually abused as children, and whereas of the 7 forensic exams done in the last 6 months in Calaveras County, 6 of the sexual assault victims were under the age of 5, whereas only 1 out of 10 sexual abuse victims in the U.S. speak out and tell of the crimes against them, and whereas through knowledge, advocacy, acceptance, and support, the community advocates, educates, sorry, and empowers individuals and families to nurture the healthy development of all children. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, does hereby declare April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And in so declaring, the Prevent Child Abuse Council and the Sexual Assault Response Team encourage citizens to join all who protect and care for children. Families, schools, law enforcement, county agencies, the courts, community, and neighborhoods must all work together if we are to effectively reduce children's exposure to violence.
Thank you, Kelly. Any Board discussion on this matter? Any public discussion on this matter? Chair is open for a motion.
I'll move the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Walensky, a second by Supervisor Callaway. Do I have further discussion on the Board?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
When I was a teacher at Calaveras High, your agency provided outreach to the high school in Rusty and Kirsten.
Yeah, now it's Yvonne, but Kirsten was there, yeah.
Yeah, he used to come in and put on presentations for the freshmen in high school. And I just want to say that I hope that those are continuing, and that I thought that they were very beneficial for the children. There were various organizations that came to us, not just your organization, there was other ones. And as a teacher, you know, who, you know, we constantly try to perfect our craft of getting across to the students and making it a situation where they can understand and be involved in those type of things in the learning process. You know, I have to say that there was probably at least 3 groups that I know of different sort of things that came into class time to give presentations on things we thought were beneficial for the students to know and hear. The ladies Kirsten and Rusty that came to my classroom, were the best of the presenters. They were very professional.
Thank you. I'll let them know you said that.
And they had not only, you know, personal stories but data and other things that were very interesting to the kids, they got them very involved, and I think it was the most effective of all the presentations, so just wanted to give you that feedback.
Thank you very much for the feedback.
Steve?
Just wanted to ask, we had a report in the First 5 Commission meeting earlier, I guess last week, that talked about the increase in pediatric assaults, and this is so barbaric and almost unbelievable that such conditions could exist anywhere, let alone Calaveras County. But do you have any analysis, or what's the situation that would spark something like this in this county or anywhere?
Well, anybody back there that wants to chime in. We've had kind of a brief discussions about why, you know, you can never really answer that question appropriately. And one of the things we're hoping is that it's because there is a greater awareness of what to look for as a parent when your child says something, you know, "Somebody touched me," or "The monster touched me," or something, that parents are maybe taking it more seriously, and that hopefully, it's not that there are more child sexual assaults, but there's a greater awareness so more are coming to the forefront. That is our hope.
Al, if you're going to speak, you have to come up to the mic. We're a record.
Mine was just a simple question, how many assaults did we have last year, sexual assaults, and how many violations of children did we have?
Well, I have, some of those figures are in the resolution. There was reported 120 child-related sexual assaults. Seven of those had exams. So is that, does that answer your question?
Okay, I'll keep it back at the Board level now. Is there further discussion?
I had asked Robin, I called her last week, this dealt with sexual assault, but when CalWorks, Mikey's department, reports out at the Juvenile Justice Commission, they talk about all the others, and I was, and I had asked that, you know, that this is really addressing that too. So, even though it says 120 sexual assaults, there's other kinds, there's physical, emotional neglect that isn't in this, but that's what we should also be honoring, or recognizing, honoring was the wrong word.
Yes, being made aware of. Yes, absolutely. And Robin can clarify those, maybe in an email. I think she had planned to be here this morning, but.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion, I have a second. Further discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed. Passes on a 401 absent vote of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, and if we may take one, few more moments, District Attorney Barbara Yuke has a few things that she'd like to say.
Thank you.
Barbara Yuke, District Attorney. Since this is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I thought it was a perfect I thought it was a perfect time to talk to you a little bit about our SART Team. Once again, SART is the Sexual Assault Response Team. It's a multidisciplinary collaborative group that focuses on providing local services to victims of sexual assault, both children and adults. Now, in general, SART Teams are recognized statewide as best practice for protecting victims, preventing further victimization, and enhancing prosecution of the offenders. Our SART Team began a few years ago with the vision of providing those services locally for our survivors. Our group includes my office, of course, the Crisis Center, the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department, Angels Camp Police Department, Cal Works, the Child Protective Services, Mark Twain St. Joseph's Hospital, Public Health, and a small group of dedicated medical practitioners who are independent contractors who perform the actual sexual assault exams on the victims. Since we've had our SART Team up and running, victims no longer have to travel hours, two hours one way, two hours on the way back, sit in crowded urban ER waiting rooms for their exams. This has been a big benefit to our local victims. It's also been a huge benefit cost-wise to local law enforcement. Exams used to cost approximately $2,500 per exam. Now, they're only costing $500. And by law, the local agency is the one who has to pay for the exam. So, it's been a huge cost savings for the local law enforcement as well. We refined our response protocol last summer to deal with some of the specific hurdles we were having bringing these services to our victims. I'm proud to announce to you today that we have been recognized as a best practice in California for rural counties because of our protocol. I would also like to announce that we are having our first fundraiser on April 29th, Friday, April 29th, between 5:30 and 9 o'clock at the San Andreas Town Hall. Tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for children. We will have entertainment and also raffle prizes. So, I'm hoping that you can all join us in supporting the local SART Team and help us continue to help provide local services to our survivors. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven. A minute order approving contract amendment for PSA Dewberry and the amount of $12,500 for additional services for the adult detention facility and Sheriff's Administration building. This has been continued a couple times. Now it is back. Hopefully, we have a resolution. Jeannie, are you basically making the recommendation that this is the resolution that you're recommending to the board?
That's correct. The board directed Doug and I to meet with Supervisor Toffinelli to discuss this item. The last time we continued it, we did so. The price has been reduced to $12,500.
From?
From $17,500.
Okay. And Gary's supporting this?
That's correct. Yes.
Would be in support if you were here.
Yes.
Okay. Then I don't think, do we need further discussion? Then chair is open for a motion.
I'll move. Go ahead.
No. I'll move this item for the third time.
Don't give her a second for the third time.
I will second it for the first time, and I thank people for doing this. There was mutual responsibility for this, and this price indicates that, in my view. I feel it was an appropriate move. Thank you.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Walensky. Is there further board discussion? All in favor will indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Passes on a three, one absent, one, a three, one vote with one absent with Supervisor Spellman in the negative. Thank you. Move forward to item eight. A resolution approving membership for Mariposa County in the Central Sierra Planning Council and Central Sierra Economic Development District and amending the agency's joint powers agreements to accomplish same. This is being brought to us by the Central Sierra Planning Council and the Central Sierra Economic Development District. Good morning.
Good morning. Larry Busby, Executive Director, Central Sierra Planning Council and Central Sierra Economic Development District. Approximately one year ago, the County of Mariposa was invited to join both the Planning Council and the Economic Development District. In order for that to occur, the Boards of Supervisors and City Councils, who the original approvers of the joint powers agreement, have to concur with that request. So, right now, I'm in the process of going around to the 11 jurisdictions to seek or request your consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the membership of Mariposa County into the two joint powers agreements.
Thank you. Who's our representatives?
Darren.
Darren, you're our representative?
Apparently.
Do you have any comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
After reading the material in my packet, it's my understanding that this has been brought forward to the board because there are people that live in Mariposa County that are receiving Section 8 housing vouchers and they have no advocate or representation. Is that correct?
That was Toowalomee County's idea in inviting them to join, was so that they would have representation on the board for a program being operated by the agency in Mariposa County.
Okay, so Toowalomee is the one that has brought this forward, Toowalomee County?
Right. The representative from Toowalomee County was the one who presented the idea and then directed me to follow up with Mariposa.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Okay. And, this is for the benefit of people who live in Mariposa County who do not have a representative on this board, Central Sierra Economic Development, from the County of Mariposa, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, further board discussion. Now, chair is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept it as written.
I'll second.
Any public comments?
Oh.
Okay, let me go on record as saying, I have a motion by Supervisor Spellman, a second by Supervisor Walensky. Are there any public comments?
Maybe the gentleman can answer me. Was any of these counties put these show in a ballot from the taxpayers that they want to join this regional government?
Talk to the board and talk into the mic so we can hear you, Peter.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Does any of the counties put from the taxpayers that they want to join this regional government?
Does any counties do what?
Put it front of their constituents.
You mean vote on it?
If they want or not want to join this particular regional government.
It's not subject to an election, if that's the question.
Okay, so the constituent never had a say-so to be or not to be on this regional government? That is my conclusion. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, Mr. Busby said, they're already delivering the programs to Mariposa County. And these are basically state programs. The county puts no general fund money into this. Correct me if I'm an error here, but counties, the counties put no general fund money. This is basically a pass-through from the state.
Okay, then why is this regional government, if the state already doing it? It is costing money.
No, no, this agency's already doing it, not the state.
Okay, fine, but they're getting the funding, the benefits from the state?
Yes.
And instead of going directly to the county, they're going through another administrative level?
Yes.
To distribute it properly, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but without any input from the constituents of each county?
No, that's an error because you, the constituents have, you know, we are representative government. The constituents have a voice through their elected representative.
Okay.
Through the Board of Supervisors in each of these counties.
Well, I understand your reasoning, okay. I mean, I just want to bring it out forward so we can discuss it later. Does everybody on these agencies fill out and have publicly available their conflict of interest statements?
Yes.
They do? Okay, good.
They have to do the same thing the board does for all these agencies.
Is there minutes, agendas that are available in the public?
Yeah, this is a Brown Act organization.
It is a Brown Act organization.
It has to follow the...
Okay, fine. So, that's publicly available, all the financial records?
All available. You can attend their meetings to your heart's content, Peter.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad you gave me permission. So, I really appreciate it.
I'm just saying, it's open to the public. It's a Brown Act organization.
Okay, good. Because I want to make sure that the public fully appreciate the values, ideologies, and agendas that these regional governments putting forward to the public for the public's benefit. And principles involved in these agencies should get the proper credit for it. So, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second before the board.
I'd like to make one comment before voting. I'm getting mixed messages, and I want to see whether I'm getting this clear. My thought was that efficiencies in government were something that people were generally supportive of. And, in the case of small counties, when we do things one at a time, like Mariposa isolated, doing things for themselves, or for that matter, not doing things that they're supposed to be doing, or Calaveras doing it alone, we create efficiencies by working across county lines. And these joint powers agreement agencies have actually proven over time, and we've gotten a number of these that we're involved in, that they actually create, it eliminates bureaucratic overhead. Instead of four different administrations, we have a single administration in, for instance, family support. Instead of three, in this case, we would be adding another four, and so you don't duplicate administrative overheads, which is really very expensive. So, what I'm hoping is that people will recognize this as rural economies of scale rather than another bureaucratic overlay. These counties work well together. We've saved, both in terms of the improved services, for instance, in family support. We've moved from very low in the state rankings to a much higher level of efficiency. And, the administrative overhead was halved for this county. That makes a big difference in our local economy. So, I'm hoping people at least see that piece of this. And there may be different understandings of the workings of these JPAs. And in that event, I encourage people to attend them and see for themselves. They're open. The meetings always have public comment and a chance to ask questions about what those agencies are doing and how they're spending their money. I don't want it to be a mystery. These are supposed to be open, and they are. But very few people take advantage of that, as they do here. And I would encourage people to find out whether these organizations are operating to the interests of the people and in response to genuine need, and doing it as efficiently as possible.
Any other board comments? Darren?
I just want to address maybe some of the things that I heard Peter say as possible concerns. I think Steve addressed some of those things, and I want to add to what Steve has said, and just say that there is a cost savings, as Steve said. And that's something that we're looking to do, to save costs. If you don't have to duplicate things. Take locally here, for instance, there's a lot of people that have been looking at ways to save money in the eastern part of the county. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, unification of school districts versus having separate school districts. And, you know, it's pretty clear that, you know, while you have more local control with individual, different districts, you also, it's also more costly. So, there's both sides of the coin that you look at. So, this particular thing, if it was that you had a problem with the agency as a whole, that would be something that would be dealt with at the state level. Part of what we all do is we select various commissioners and representatives for our districts. And one of those I could just use, that people will be familiar with, is like Fish and Game Commissioner. The Fish and Game guy from Sacramento that's over this area comes and sits in on their meetings. But if there's something that comes to the state's attention, instead of putting a guy in a truck and paying him hourly wage and his mileage and everything else to come from Sacramento down to Calaveras to check something out, he gets on the phone and makes a phone call to the local Fish and Game Commissioner. And that person, who's a local person here in Calaveras County, who makes no money, they're just completely volunteer, they will go out and kind of be the eyes and ears of, you know, just to check the situation out. And if it merits further investigation, then the person will get in the truck and come out from Sacramento. So, the way I look at this is not unlike some of those other things where, you know, these local agencies, in Mariposa, you have people that are receiving Section 8 vouchers from the state to pay for their rent because of their economic status. And, if there's nobody in Mariposa County who's providing oversight, then that could cause problems in a number of different ways. At one point in my life, I did own rental properties. I don't anymore. I've divested of those. But, I rented, some of my places were rented by people who had Section 8 vouchers. And without the oversight of, you know, an organization as such, some things can go awry and taxpayers' dollars would be wasted, in my opinion. So, I think that it's a good thing. And that doesn't mean that you have to agree with the program in its entirety, but as it exists, to have somebody in Mariposa County to help, you know, oversight, et cetera, I think is probably a good idea. For the taxpayers as well as the people who are involved in the program.
Any other board comments? I have a motion and a second before the board. All in favor will indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes on a 401 absent vote of the Board of Supervisors. Move forward to item nine, Review Correspondence Reports on Various Matters of Concern. Darren, would you like to initiate the discussion today?
Sure. Supervisor Toffinelli and I will be in Sacramento on Thursday. Supervisor Toffinelli is spearheading that. We are going to have a meeting to follow up on the FEMA situation here in Calaveras County. And Supervisor Toffinelli has found something particular in the details that might help our county, whereas it may not help other counties, but it will help ours. And we're hoping for a good outcome from that meeting on Thursday. Thursday evening also, we will have a county service Area 1 meeting at Rancho Calaveras Clubhouse from 7 until 9. That's the group or committee that deals with road paving schedules as well as other things that happen in that county service Area 1, which is Rancho Calaveras predominantly. This Thursday, because I'll be in Sacramento, there will be no constituent meetings at Rancho or in Copper because I will be in Sacramento with the FEMA stuff. So, everybody gets a week off from the constituent meetings. And I'm really, actually, I'm really sad that I'm going to miss it, you know, because I really enjoy, I get a lot of feedback from people. And it's a good way for me to get a pulse on what's going on in the communities, and I really do enjoy it. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Darren. And Marita?
I also will be at that meeting on Thursday regarding FEMA. I have the Past Property Owners Council. On Wednesday evening, I'll be in Sacramento for the Sierra Business Council, Sierra Vision Award. Eric and Christine Taylor of Outer Isle are one of four entities that are being recognized for their work. And those of you who've used Outer Isle or know Eric and Christine know how supportive they have been of our community. On Friday is the Jazz Concert at Avery Middle School to support the Balacito Music Booster. So, Tom, you might like to do that. Home and Garden Shows this weekend. The Bowling for Common Ground fundraiser is this weekend. And on Monday, both Steve and I will be at Child Support Meeting in Toowalomee. That's also a joint powers agency. That's...
Complete your comments?
Yeah, I'll let Jeannie do the budget or like thereof.
Steve, what are your words of wisdom today?
No wisdom, but lots of meetings. I'm going to be at 1:30 today, if we get out in time. And I believe Marita will be there as well. The...
Better be out in time.
The Director of Region 5 with the US Forest Service, Randy Moore, is coming to a meeting at the Calaveras Ranger District, and I'll be attending that. I have a 4 o'clock Mental Health Board meeting. I have the West Point Scholarship Association meeting shortly thereafter, and the West Point Cemetery District meeting after that today. Tomorrow, I have the Sierra Day in the Capitol. We'll be talking about issues of Sierra communities with legislators in Sacramento. And I will also be at the Sierra Business Council's award ceremony that evening, also in Sacramento. On Friday, I'll be meeting with Kristen Olson in the morning. And I have Blue Mountain Community Renewal Council meeting in the evening. On Monday, I will be at the Family Support JPA in Sonora. And at that evening, I will be on Monday evening, the 11th... And that evening, I will be, on Monday evening, the 11th, I'll be at the Paloma Community Meeting.
Complete your comments?
That's it.
Darren, you had an additional comment?
You want me to wait until after Jeannie's?
No, go ahead. We'll do the board first.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment that number nine is review of correspondence, and then it has other matters of concern. So this would be the other matters of concern. There was a person from the audience who just left, unfortunately, who brought up something about Ms. Callaway's comments on March 22nd, and I want to address that. The thing that she referenced to was a definition of what's known as the chilling effect. And you can look that up. And I think she gave the definition from Webster's Dictionary. And basically, it's a way to shut people up, to say things, to make them feel uncomfortable. And I want to say that as the junior member of the Board of Supervisors, I absolutely agree with this. And there's been many instances in the past where Marita has used this tactic on me. For instance, during the jail time, we were talking about the cost of printing. I named a local printing shop here in San Andreas. And I was told in no uncertain terms, and I'm not to name businesses specifically, because that's promotion. Yet, whenever I talk about the non-ability for myself or other people in the county to buy clothing for their children, Marita constantly brings up the name of one particular western wear store in Angels Camp. And she said it no less than half a dozen times in the three months I've been on the board. So the chilling effect that she seeks to have on me is that she can name businesses anytime she wants. But if I'm going to name one, then I get censured. So that's the first example of that in regards to me. With regards to the STANTEC example that the person brought up today, there was an individual who brought up some concerns about STANTEC, sustainability, et cetera. And I agreed that it was reasonable that we do a little research and a little vetting process possibly for people that the county decides to contract with. We have some responsibility to the taxpayers to have a vetting process, not just for professional ability, but also for philosophical ideologies or things like that that may be subversive to our government or to our civilization. So as a backlash from that, again, the chilling effect was, there were people that accused me of being unreasonable. And then today, we had the lady that came and made a comment. And when people make comments at the podium, they're required to be on record. That doesn't mean that their name has to be verbalized. It's on the record, and she handed her comments to Diane, the representative here for recording, with her name and the information on it. So by Marita asking Diane to verbalize that person's name, there again, she's creating a chilling effect. That woman has never made a comment at this board that I'm aware of before. And she was a little bit tepid about making a comment today. And she, on purpose, put her name on the correspondence instead of stating it from the microphone, for whatever reason. So by Marita asking her name for her name publicly, she was responded to and said, "It's on the paper, as documented." And then Marita asked Diane to verbalize it. So then anybody that's watching at home for recording purposes now know the woman's name. So there again, this is an inverted way for Marita to create a chilling effect. In other words, if you come to the podium, the message is, don't think that you're going to come to the podium and put your name on a document written and not have it verbalized in front of everybody. If you have the guts to come and say something at the podium, then you better be ready to have your name broadcast and recorded. And so that provides another chilling effect. Because there's some people that are tepid, and they're not going to come forward, number one, especially if they think that their name's going to be broadcast, to be picked up by the media or seen by people on TV, et cetera, like that. So I'm very much in agreeance with this. In regards with the STANTEC example, there was an individual that was here today and left also. This person reminded me, and an example that's a perfect scenario for the STANTEC argument that we had on the 22nd. And that is that we had some talk about CALPERS today. That's been a regular topic on the agenda. CALPERS in the late 1980s, for some of you that may not remember, Nelson Mandela was still in jail in the late 1980s. And there was a lot of public outcry nationwide and also worldwide by international groups to free Nelson Mandela. He was a political prisoner for 27 years. At his release, they held regular elections in South Africa, and he was elected president. So he went from being in jail for 27 years as a political dissident to becoming the elected president of South Africa. Now, how does that tie back into what we're talking about? CALPERS, one of the biggest organizations in the United States in terms of investment pooling and funding, made a landmark decision in the late 1980s when Nelson Mandela was still in prison. And they said that they didn't believe that it was appropriate policy for any of their investment dollars to be issued or invested in companies that either existed in or did business with or manufactured goods in South Africa because of apartheid. The South African government refused to let go of apartheid. They were holding a strong line on that. In response to what was going on all over the world, they were holding their feet firm and not moving on that. Well, when CALPERS, one of the biggest investment entities in the world, said they were withdrawing or divesting, is the economic word, they were divesting themselves of all interest in South African companies or companies that manufactured in South Africa, until such time that apartheid was lifted. That played a major role in apartheid going away because of CALPERS and other organizations like that that have a lot of clout. So if it is that somebody brought before this board that they believe that there's a company, and I'm not saying, I don't know about STANTEC, if they do things that are un-American or subversive or whatnot, I don't know that. But if somebody seems to think that perhaps that they do, what I'm saying is that I'm not trying to chill the effect of somebody bringing forward information to this board. I'm saying if somebody's bringing forward information, maybe we ought to take a look at it. If not, I think we do give a chilling effect in saying that we don't care about what people think or we think that they're ridiculous. And that is completely unacceptable. So if there needs to be a vetting process in the future for people who we do business with and give contracts with through this county, I think it would be absolutely appropriate to do so. And I would be glad to be a part of the vetting process.
Okay. Do you? Okay. Let me give mine, and then we'll go back to Marita. Mine's very short. I did attend an RCRC meeting week before last. We didn't meet last week. And all my comments became totally irrelevant once the budget fell apart. But the only thing that really sort of came out of it is that it fell apart because the Republicans do, in fact, have a proposal and an agenda. It's about a 50-point agenda, not all of which needs to be in an election process. But I'll defer to Jeannie, who probably has much more updated information than what I have since all of these events, many events in the, doing away with the June election, apparently is in fact, isn't, is a fact at this point, at least it's being presented as a fact. So that completes my comments. We'll go back to Marita. Marita, do you have additional comments? Steve, do you have additional comments?
I wanted to comment a little bit about Darren's remarks, because I think that it raises some important points that we need to consider as a board. The first one, which is one I agree with, is that all, in a place with this many ideas and politics and this breadth of perspective, it's important that all opinions be welcomed before this board in any context that is in the public realm. And given our differences, I would say that at times when we hear things that are not of our perspective, that sometimes it feels like a chilling effect or an assault on our person. So for instance, we've had in this country a whole lot of experiences where the accusation of being un-American or unpatriotic have been used to silence people. And I think that there's a balance here that has to be struck. I think we can't use our words as cudgels against individuals that are using their First Amendment rights. But we need to be able to disagree without feeling that there is an air of intimidation. I personally am concerned that we would use words like, well, equating the use of the word unsustainable or sustainable with the notion that in and of itself is unpatriotic or un-American. If the alternative to sustainable is unsustainable, I would argue that sustainability is probably a good thing for the country. And it gets into the arguments about what's the policy? What are the things we're really talking about here? And we have the right, as Americans, to disagree without having the fundamental motivations undercut by such accusations on any side of the issue. And this is painful and tough, but it requires people to put themselves in the other's shoes when they're speaking. So if we are really to go forward and have a political litmus test on what contractors we deal with, I think it's a slippery slope and has a chilling effect on the business of government. I believe that we need to take bids that are the most effective with companies that can do the best work for the best price. That's the litmus test that we have always used in this county. Now, if you decide that anybody who on their website uses the word sustainability, and ergo, they are undermining the sovereignty of the United States or are unpatriotic or anti-American, just by that fact, then we're really diminishing our debate as much as the concerns that Darren had spoken of. And I believe that these two bookends here are important to recognize and that we conduct our business within a reasoned, and by reasoned, I mean, use of a word does not make you unpatriotic. Having an opinion that's different from somebody else does not make you anti-American. And if we can't at least acknowledge that within this room there is a tremendous diversity, and you've elected a tremendous diversity of people here. And if we can't recognize that within that, we are all Americans, that we care, we're in this country because we want to be in this country. We are lucky to be here. And our belief in that is unwavering. How we best deal with economic distress or government that is always a challenge and bureaucracies that don't always meet the needs of the people, that we may have different strategies or use different words. But there are lines that we cross sometimes on both ends of this spectrum that people would feel are chilling. And I would hope we could all find a way to stay back at that line.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, we'll go to our CAO.
Well, the budget discussions have been stalled, as you know.
I had no idea.
We started the year, for the current year and next year, with a $26.6 billion state deficit. Cuts have been made by the enactment of budget trailer bills to the tune of about $11.2 billion to reduce the deficit, leaving a deficit of $15.4 billion. The governor has said he's going to be looking at all cuts now, which primarily may be in the areas of education, health and human services, and public safety, law enforcement. Discussions continue about pension reform and the state spending cap. Those two areas seem to be the areas of specific contention between the parties. And whether or not they'll come to some agreement is yet to be seen. The governor did sign AB 109 last night, which is the public safety realignment shift. If you are interested, this is the budget trailer bill, just on the public safety. It does not become operative until there is a community corrections grant program and a budget appropriation. As you know, the funding that was to go with this shift from state to local jurisdictions was dependent upon the June special election and the extension of the taxes, which is effectively off the table at this point. From what I read, it's all but dead. I mean, things are never over till they're over in the legislature. But it's pretty dead. I don't think anybody's anticipating any type of June election at this point. So as we make our way through this, we'll be really taking a look at what happens between now and November. There are discussions that perhaps there will be a measure on the November ballot to extend taxes. But that's all hearsay at this point.
Did he sign AB 111?
I don't know. I haven't, it wasn't on the website this morning. But AB 111...
Had to do with, AB had to do with the jail funding.
Had to do with AB 900 to make it easier for urban counties, actually, to access the funding. And small counties were concerned about the language change in that bill. I have not seen this morning whether or not that was actually enacted. So at this point, as we go forward, I'm trying to come up with new words. It's grim, it's awful, it's horrendous. There are dark clouds. They're getting blacker by the day. There doesn't seem any hope on the horizon between now and July 1 for the continued funding for our public safety law enforcement, which is the Vila funding. So we will proceed with some very difficult budget discussions in the next few months. I wanted to let the board know that we've tentatively scheduled the budget hearings for June 7 through the 10th. If that works for your schedules, that's the second week of June. So we'd begin probably in the afternoon of June 7, Tuesday, and go as long as is needed. And at this point, I don't know how long will be needed, but 15 minutes. So I don't have much to do.
The knowledge we have to act on.
Right.
There's knowledge, why there's not going to be a whole lot to act on.
And I think the problem is, it's just like continual shifting sand. And we're just continually looking at new proposals and trying to evaluate how they impact us. So with that, that's what I have to say.
County Council, Mr. Jones.
Nothing to report for the board today.
Board Clerk, Diane Severoo. No potato chips for the board? Any other staff out there? Mary?
Yes, thank you very much, Agricultural Commissioner. Two weeks ago, you asked that I return with the study session regarding the Agricultural Dispute Resolution Committee. I would like to ask if I can have one more week for that and present it to you on April 19.
Will you have a problem with that?
I won't be present for that meeting, but go ahead. I wanted to join in the request. I told Mary I'd participate, and I won't be here next week. So I appreciate if you go over.
Well, how about make it the 26th? Is there some urgency in this? Is there any urgency?
I'm missing two in a row.
I thought you said it was the 19th you would be there. Was it the 26th either? Okay, make it the 33rd.
Shall I push it to May? I will not be available the first week of May.
Okay.
That's fine.
Bring it. Is that all right?
We can always move it out if we need to.
Do what you wish.
If it turns out there's a 2-2 vote, we'll obviously continue it.
Okay.
Let me check with the board. Darren, all right? Marita, all right? Okay, it's all right with me. Jeannie, you don't see a problem with that? Steve? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Delay it another week. Thank you. Okay, that completes the public part of our agenda today. So we will adjourn from the regular agenda, and we will reconvene in closed session. The closed session's still on, Jim? Okay, would you like to meet here or in your conference room?
Here.
Here. Okay, so we'll take about a 10-minute recess and allow the media to close down.